All right. Good evening, everyone. We are going to call our meeting of city council the order. We thank everybody for being in attendance tonight. Rodney, thank you for being here. I usually forget to thank you for streaming this live throughout Facebook land and Channel 3 land. So we are in order at 7:03 PM. I'd ask us to observe our moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge, please. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have several guests, recognized guests this evening that are on our agenda and for the council's consideration, under each of those points, we have the opportunity to take action. So it is right there. Usually we put it down under new business or old business, but given this, we have so many guests this evening, we'll just keep it underneath each line item. So up first, joining us on the phone is David Howe, our CPA, to go over with us the audit that you have for you. This is through the year ending June 30th, 2024, for the city of Buchanan. David, there you are. Good evening, sir.
Evening. How is everyone?
We're doing well. We're doing well. Thank you. How are you?
We're doing well as well.
Great.
We take the opportunity to have this exit conference with city council. I wanted to go over a couple of things real quick before I turn it over to my associate Terry Henderson, who's going to go through the report. The first thing I would like to draw everyone's attention to is that we performed a financial audit, which was designed to render an opinion on your financial statements. The financial audit is not designed to discover fraud. If you suspect fraud in your organization, the type of audit that you need to have is called a forensic audit. We do look for, look for fraud, but at the level that we're looking for it, fraud could exist and we would miss it. Also, as far as noncompliance with laws, regulations, contract agreements, et cetera, we are not lawyers. We are not a judge. So when every auditor renders, looks at a compliance item and decides whether or not you are in compliance, an attorney or a judge may differ from our opinions. That's not just my firm. That's universal law auditors. We're, we're not even supposed to say that you have committed an illegal act. We're not supposed to even say that you were in noncompliance with something. We only say that it was potential noncompliance or a potential illegal act. Is there any questions about that?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, the thing I'm pointing out about is if we, if we were to discover or believe that you are in noncompliance with something, we would report it. However, someone else down the line may disagree with us and interpret the same requirement that we would differently. And as far as internal controls go, we look at your internal control system at enough level to allow us to plan our audit. We do not render an opinion on your internal control system. And again, this is not just my firm. This is a type of financial statement audit. So we don't render an opinion on your internal control system. Now, if a material weakness is discovered by us in our audit, we will notify you of that discovery. However, we will not do an in-depth analysis, detailed analysis of your internal control system. If you require something like that or would desire something like that, then that would be a different type of engagement. Are there any questions about those?
I believe so.
Okay. Well, this time I'll turn the show over to my associate Terry Henderson. He's going to walk you through the financial statement reports.
Terry, we cannot hear you. You show up as though you're not muted, but we see your mouth moving and nothing's coming. Nope.
We can't hear you, Terry. I'll tell you what, I'll go ahead and just, well, Terry's trying to work that out, but I'll go ahead and proceed so as not to hold up counsel on the meeting. The first report we're going to talk about is the independent auditor report. It is on page three of your report. I forgot to ask, did everyone receive a paper copy of the audit?
Yes.
Awesome. There is a PDF version available as well. Ambi should have that if you need one. So the, because, because of governmental entities such as the city of Buchanan has what we call multiple opinion units, we're giving opinions on multiple different things. On the summary of opinions, as you see there, we actually spell out for each opinion unit what type of opinion we're giving. The unmodified opinions are the best opinions that we can give you. And they say that everything is presented in all material respects, is fairly in all material respects. So there's no material misstatements or adjustments that need to be made to the financial statements. However, on the ones that say qualified, that means that there was an issue that was not, we were not able to give a unmodified opinion, but there was, there was an issue there. And we're going to, as you can see, all, all of the opinion units were given an unmodified opinion except for the business type activities, which includes the water fund, and it all stems from the water fund, is why we couldn't give an unmodified opinion on it. And basically, on the next page, page four, there is a, on the second paragraph, it talks about the basis for the qualified and unmodified opinions. And then the paragraph below that is the matter giving rise to the qualified opinion for the water fund and the business type activities. And it, all it was, was we were not engaged as auditors as of June 30, 2024. The, and it was just a matter of the way that the audit contracts are bid out to the state auditor's office. So their roles are, we don't have a contract. We are not allowed to perform any audit procedures. And so without that contract, at year end, we was not able to do a physical inventory of the water, of the water fund's parts inventory, which, that's happened in the past as well. So this is not anything new. Anytime at year end, there's not an auditor engaged, and it generally happens. Is there any questions about the qualifications on the water fund and the business type activities?
Yes. What makes the difference between water and business type activities from the other items in the summary of opinions? They're unmodified, but these are, those two are qualified. What precipitated the difference in that?
If you go to page four of the independent auditor report, and you look at the third paragraph down, matter giving rise to qualified opinion on the business type activities and water fund, it tells us right there that we were unable to observe a physical inventory account for the water fund at June 30, 2024, because we were not under contract as auditors at that day, nor were we able to satisfy ourselves as to the carrying value of inventory by other auditing procedures. So because we weren't able to, we weren't able to do a physical inventory, but when the count is, we normally, when we're under contract, we will watch the count and will verify the count. Because we weren't under contract, we're not allowed to perform that procedure. So that necessitated the qualified opinion on water fund and the business activities. The business activities is like that because the water fund is a business activity and it gets thrown into the business activities.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know what differentiate, differentiate.
Well, they weren't.
I don't understand the difference between that and the water, or sewage department or waste or any of the other departments.
The water department have to have a physical inventory?
What page are you talking about, sir?
I'm still on the summary of opinions, sir.
Ambi's going to weigh in.
The water department has inventory where they count all the pipes, all the nuts and bolts and man, manholes and lids and everything that there is. We have two people inventorying it on June 30. If you have to do it on June 30, they counted them. Because I couldn't go into contract with an auditor, I hadn't even been sent a bid package to contract with an auditor, they weren't physically able to stand there and watch them count because they weren't even under contract. So they had to give a qualified opinion that they weren't there for the, for the count.
Thank you. Now, now the dots are connected.
We do it, we do count it and we have witnesses within the system. We're trying to figure out a way actually that we could do that in the future because there's, every other year, we're not going to have an auditor under contract because I don't have a bid package to do it.
Okay. I'm sorry for holding things.
That's okay.
Well, this is no problem. No, it's a great question. Ambi's awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you, Ambi. So that, that was the, the opinions on the financial statements of the city of Buchanan. They were unmodified except for the issue with us unable to observe the inventory account of the water and the water fund. All right. We'll go back to our next report. Did you get your sound working, Terry? Didn't, I think when you signed in, there was a button you had to give access to the lot, to the computer. You did? Let's see. All right. Let's go to the independent audit report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with governmental auditing standards. And that would be on page 81. Page 81. It's, it's on our letterhead, so there's not an actual page. The number printed on 81. And that being said, we'll go to page 82. The first paragraph on page 82 says, "Our consideration of internal control was for the limited purpose described in the first paragraph for this section," which is what I said earlier, "the purpose was to plan our audit, not to render an opinion on your internal control system." So our, our limited procedures were not designed to identify all deficiencies in internal control that might be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Given these limitations during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we considered to be material weaknesses. However, material weaknesses may exist that have not been identified. So to kind of give you a background types of internal controls that we looked at, we looked at internal controls over your cash receipts, over cash disbursements, over processing invoices and payments, internal controls over payroll, internal controls over, I can't think of anything. I know there's something else, but it's not coming to mind. But those are, those are the big ones. And there was a few others I can't off the top of my head, I recall. There were things like capital assets, et cetera. The next paragraph, second paragraph on page 82 is the report on compliance and other matters. And it says, "As part of obtaining reasonable assurance about whether the city's financial statements are free from material misstatements, we performed tests of its compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, noncompliance of which can have a direct and material effect on determination of financial statement amounts. However, providing an opinion on compliance with those provisions was not an objective of our audit, and accordingly, we do not express an opinion. And the results of our tests disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under governmental auditing standards." And to kind of give you an idea of what kind of compliance issues we were testing, or things like payroll taxes, make sure that the city had complied with all of the payroll tax laws and that there aren't any large 941 taxes that's out there that's not being paid. If any of you have been unfortunately served on a board of an organization that has a huge debt to the IRS, that's not a pleasant thing. So those are the kinds of things that we looked at. The other things will be our bond covenant, your bond covenants, the rate, rate covenant type situations. But that's kind of the gist of it. Any questions?
I believe so.
Okay. We're going to skip down to page 83. And this is the third independent auditors report that we provide in our audit. And then is the independent auditors report on compliance for each major program and on internal controls over compliance required by uniform guidance. On, just for reference, on page 71 is a schedule, or 79 is a schedule of expenditures of federal awards. It lists all of the federal programs that you, that the city had expended money on. And the total federal awards expended for 24 totaled about $1.8 million, a little over $1.8 million. And the federal government requires us when we're auditing, if you were to spend over $750,000 or more in federal money, then we have to look at certain compliance requirements of the major programs. Now, we don't look at every one of those programs, but we determine through criteria that the federal government lays out which ones we are going to look at. And so on the, on the federal award program, major programs, we saw there was not any noncompliance with the compliance requirements of that program that were required to be reported. Which was not surprising. You guys, you're, you guys do a great job. If you're interested to know which programs were major programs, it was, you can see that on page 86, about the bottom quarter of the page, it says identification of major programs. There were two. There was the COVID-19 coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. That was the American recovery money. And then you have the hazard mitigation grant. So those were the two programs that we were required to test compliance with. Any questions there?
I believe so.
All right. We're, we're coming up to the home stretch, I believe.
I was going to say. Page 87 looks like a doozy.
Yeah. Let's see. Yes, yes, there it is. Thank you. My report's front and back, so I'm a little confused on what's front and what was back. So yes, the summary schedule of prior year findings. Of course, there wasn't any findings in the prior year. And then on page 86, up the very bottom, section two, the financial statement findings, there were no findings that we reported that we found. And then section three, federal question costs and such, there were no question costs reported. Again, that's, that's surprise. I would entertain any questions that anyone might have?
Any questions for David?
Any questions for David? Once again, a very thorough report. David, we appreciate it and all the work you do for the city, working with our office staff here in the different departments. So if there are no questions, it is on our agenda as an item here. I entertain a motion that we accept the audit exit report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, '24.
Yes.
Motion by Jack. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussion? Here in the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, motion carries. Okay. David, thank you. Terry, we'll talk to you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Forgot one line item. Let's move back up real quick. I need to ask for your approval of the previous meeting minutes from four-three as well as the late eleven meeting on four-fifteen. If there are no additions or corrections, I entertain a motion that we approve those as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, that motion is carried. All right. Now we can go back. Sorry?
I'll pick you up.
Our next presentation, Mr. Dean Everett, is here from the Rotary Club with a presentation of AED devices for the Buchanan Police Department. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dean Everett. For the benefit of many of you that don't know me, anyway, I'm here representing Buchanan Upsher Rotary Club tonight, and I'm here bearing gifts. So everybody, I'd be happy with that.
Right.
So I have some prepared remarks and some terrible at winging it, so bear with me. Rotary is one of the largest service organizations worldwide, and the Rotary Club has been part of Upsher County for over a hundred years. We channel our commitment to service at home and abroad through the avenue of service, which are the foundation of our club activity. One of these avenues of service is finding ways to improve the quality of life for people in their communities and to serve the public interest. Each year, Rotarians sit down to discuss our community needs and the Rotary Club of Buchanan Upsher, how we can best assist the community. This year, our aim was to provide support to emergency response in Upsher County. What area of emergency health response could we immediately impact with maximum effect? After conversations with first responders, an area of need became clear: portable artificial external defibrillators, or AED, for both the city police and Upsher County Sheriff's Office. And I think we presented the two of them this morning through the county commission. In today's fast-paced world, emergencies can happen anytime, anyplace. Sudden cardiac arrest is one such life-threatening event that can strike without warning. In fact, fifteen percent of our hospital cardiac arrests occur in public places per the American Heart Association. However, with the correct tools and knowledge, communities can become empowered to respond swiftly and effectively when such emergencies arise. An AED is a portable electronic device designed to deliver an electronic shock to the heart. The devices are usually friendly, and when used properly, along with CPR, significantly increase the chances of survival. I know I took a CPR class a couple of years ago, so I had the privilege of using one. Anybody in the room has ever used one?
No.
Yes.
You?
Just for practice.
We know who that is.
There you have it.
The survival rate for a sudden cardiac arrest in a nonhospital setting is under ten percent. A CPR-trained bystander can increase survival by thirty percent. CPR and the use of an AED increases survival to just over fifty percent. For AEDs to make a meaningful impact in saving lives, they must be accessible. Upsher County encompasses three hundred and fifty-five square miles with a population of twenty-three thousand eight hundred. Buchanan serves as a county seat with unincorporated communities touching all geographic areas of the county. Our county EMS currently has two squads serving the entire three hundred and fifty-five square miles, which makes it obvious why both Upsher County deputies and/or Buchanan City Police are often the first unseen of an emergency, including health emergencies. The AHA starts stats show nine out of ten cardiac arrest victims will survive if shocked within the first minute. Buchanan City Police officers are certified in both AED use and CPR and currently have two AEDs available. However, Rotary felt it was imperative to supply officers with additional unit to respond quickly and effectively to a cardiac incident, whether in the field or parks and facilities adjacent to policy headquarters, areas that attract large numbers of people for concerts, festivals, and sporting events. With the assistance of District 7545 Rotary Grant, in addition to club funds raised by our annual blood screenings, the Rotary Club of Buchanan Upsher is happy to present these two AEDs to Chief Matt Gregory and his department. Mr. Matt? Here you go. You never know when you can save a life.
Yep.
Thank you, Ken.
Do you want to come to the center, Dean?
Yeah, do we want to get in front of the...
We want to see you.
Time to do it.
Just hold on.
Kelly Turney was supposed to be here tonight, but she's under the weather, so.
All right.
Right there first?
Yep. One, two, three. Okay.
Right here, Dean, if you would. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Know a little better about this.
Thanks, Dean. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
We certainly appreciate the generosity of the Buchanan Rotary Club. It's served our community for many years, and we just appreciate the opportunity to work with you all on several different projects throughout the year and appreciate this very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
All right. Up next, we have our friends from Fifty-Nine College Avenue. We'll welcome Jen Randall, Ryan Thorne, and Lynn Linder here this evening. Jen, you're the only one that circled yes, so are you taking the...
Taking one for the team this evening.
Sure am.
Do you want me to set the table?
You don't look like Jen, but...
Thankfully for her, yes. Absolutely true. Mayor, members of council, just to kind of set the table on this next discussion. When we received our first distribution of opioid settlement funds, you had asked, the council had asked me to kind of keep an eye out for opportunities to deploy these funds for their intended purpose, and that is to assist in mitigating and helping prevent future opioid-related problems. Through Curtis Wilkerson, who's the chairman of the city's planning commission, I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, I think at this point, to meet with, is it Dr. Randall? Okay, with Dr. Randall, and it's not Dr. Thorne, with Ryan Thorne, who is with Wesleyan as well, regarding a program of theirs that I think is, the council should consider for use of at least some of the funds at its disposal, which I think at present are, I don't know what the exact amount is, but it's over a hundred thousand dollars at present. It might be closer to a hundred and fifteen if memory serves, and I'm sure somebody's got that data here. Wesleyan is developing, and I'm not going to get too far in this because that's what they're here to talk about, but they have a program to facilitate the training or to train individuals in addiction counseling, which is a subset, or it's a specialization within therapeutic counseling and other things. So one of the big problems that exists is a lack of trained professionals to work with individuals who are overcoming addiction. This program of Wesleyan's is intended to fill that need, and to the extent that, you know, we can only use this money, the city can only use this money for certain things. Depending upon the council's posture with this, we'll confirm, but I'm highly confident that this is appropriate use of that funds, of those funds. Just wanted to put these individuals in front of you to consider what they have to say and whether or not this is an effort that you would choose to support with these dedicated funds. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Dr. Randall.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Thanks for the time. If you want to follow along like the good professor I am, pull out your handout in your materials. I absolutely will not read to you, but I do want to highlight a couple of points as we talk about this program. As Tom said, and I think he did a really good job tying this up for us, a lot of cities and counties are struggling, trying to figure out what do we do with these opioid abatement funds. And so this absolutely is within one of the buckets, per se, that we could use this funding for, is around the professional development and really workforce development for addiction professionals in our communities. So I run a master's level counseling program at Wesleyan. We're very new. We've been there since January of 2024. We had the very good fortune to have a partnership with Community Care of West Virginia that helped us with the seed money to start that program. One of our next endeavors to continue to give back to our community and to Wesleyan and the folks that I'm here representing this evening is to also launch a certificate in addiction counseling. So this will be a twelve-credit graduate-level program that can be done entirely online with professionals such as myself. I'll be one of the instructors as well as a member of the West Virginia First Foundation Board, who we have hired on to be one of our adjunct instructors for this certificate program. And we're creating a curriculum that really does focus on how do we get the tools into the hands of the people that are on the front lines doing this work in our communities? Take a guess for me. How many overdose, suspected overdoses have we had in Upsher County since the beginning of the year? No, we're under that, thankfully.
Okay, good.
Twenty-seven.
Okay.
Twenty-seven. We're not quite to the end of April. So I do want to continue to beat the drum of while a lot of the national media attention right now is going to, oh, fentanyl deaths, opioid overdose deaths are declining. While that is true, I want to be clear that that's not always the reality for regions like ours that have been the hardest hit by this opioid epidemic. The first wave of the opioid epidemic was really about prescription medications that were being over-prescribed in our communities, okay? The Sackler family has paid dearly for their involvement at the head of Purdue Pharma for that. The second wave was really about all of the people that always come in the wake of that kind of addiction. Every heroin user, dealer, and street thug, quite frankly, that's the second wave when you think about opioid addiction, right, is peddling heroin into our communities. The third wave is really fentanyl, right, this incredibly powerful and toxic drug that we have in our systems. Fourth, where we find ourselves now, guess what? Methamphetamines are back on the rise in our communities because we've done a very good job in a lot of ways of ensuring that we're not over-prescribing opiates, that we're getting straight heroin and fentanyl out of the hands of people in our communities. And yet, it's now more important than ever that the people that are really trained to treat people with this kind of substance use disorder understand what's called a co-occurring addiction, right, meaning that gone are the days where somebody is coming into an office like mine, somebody that's an addiction professional, and working with me just on an opioid use disorder. I'm seeing methamphetamine use disorder. I'm seeing alcohol use disorder, polysubstance use disorder. And so this takes a specialized level of training, and that's what we aim to do at Wesleyan and what we would suggest you take a really good look at and consider for your opioid abatement funds, is creating a scholarship fund so that people that are already working in our communities in Upsher County would have the availability to come and do this program. Now, we're not just here with a handout asking. There's a give-back from us on the opposite end of this, right, is that we will also discount our tuition to ensure that community partnerships also have a bit of skin in the game, so to speak, so that if they are a community care employee, Community Care has said that they will absolutely use some of their professional development funds to help cover the cost of the tuition as well. We're hoping to establish community partnerships. The Upsher County Board of Education is another program partner that we could work with in really ensuring that their school counselors have the type of advanced training that they need to be working with kiddos that are so hard impacted by this epidemic that are in our school systems. So I think there's a lot of potential here. And let me turn to questions.
What are the undergrad requirements to enter the program?
What are the undergraduate requirements?
To enter, enter the one-month program, twelve hours.
This is a post-masters degree. So these are folks that already have a master's level degree in a behavioral health field.
In behavioral health.
They could be a nurse. They could be a social worker. They could be a counselor. But no, this is a post-masters certificate program.
Okay.
Anticipate a total cost of each individual certification, is there?
Yeah, I knew you'd be the money guy. Seventy-five hundred dollars is about what tuition and fees would cost to send one student through this program.
Is that the discounted amount or is that the gross amount?
That's the gross amount right now.
Gross amount, okay. And recipients of any scholarships that we would set up or any funding that we would do, what type of discount? I mean, I'm looking at sixteen individuals we could help?
That's what we're approximating right now.
Approximating?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you had anybody in your group yet, has more time for this yet or hasn't started?
We start in fall. We launch in the fall. Okay. And so right now, we have thirty-one students altogether in our master's level program, and it looks like we'll have another twelve to thirteen that will start with us in the fall. And out of that pool of twelve students, there's already at least a quarter of them that have expressed that they're interested in doing the certificate as well.
Amy, do we have about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars net grant or is it one fifteen?
About one thirteen.
One thirteen. So a full scholarship would be fifteen individuals. But I really, I don't know. I think the people that are participating need to have a little bit of a commitment to it, don't you, Robbie?
Well...
Instead of paying the total tuition?
I don't think that we would have to pay the total. I mean, scholarship is also partial.
Yeah.
Or is it the ask? To be clear, as you read through your packet materials, the ask is not that the city of Buchanan would be a hundred percent funding the scholarship for this. It's really that we would go to our community partners like the Upsher County Board of Education. We would go to Community Care and ask them to also put some of their funding into this as well to ensure that we have some buy-in from our community partnerships.
Amy?
I have a question as a citizen.
Sure.
How many of those people would remain within this community to help this addiction in this community and not go elsewhere after they're trained?
That's a really great question. I'm glad you're bringing it up. This is for people, what we're suggesting is that this is for folks already living and working here. So we are not suggesting that we would use any of the opioid abatement funds that the city of Buchanan has received to fund students that are coming into our master's level program from other areas. We are specifically asking the city of Buchanan to consider this so that it would be for people already living and working here.
I'm glad that you drew it. It says the partnership with Community Care of West Virginia, at least eight of the sixteen spots would be reserved for employees of the organization. What that, I mean, model would be that you would be recommending for the city of Buchanan? Similar or?
What we're saying is that we know, having run the data on who are the master's level clinicians that are already living and working here, the vast majority of them are at Community Care sites, working in addiction and recovery already.
No, no, I understand.
Absolutely.
I'm trying to read this quickly. I'm trying to read this quickly.
No, 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 absolutely.
Yeah.
Tom, did you have some?
So the, just so I'm clear on this.
Sure.
The kind of the target student for this program is somebody who is already an established professional.
Correct.
You mean, they're already working in a clinical setting, either in nursing, counseling, psychology... psychology, maybe they're in, maybe they're a school counselor or whatever.
Correct.
And this is kind of a earlier mid-career kind of enhancement to their credentials or their training that would then kind of open up some additional, some additional skill sets for them in the jobs that they're already working in.
Absolutely. I think that's a good way to look at it. Not only is it workforce development, right, for our workforce that's already here, but think of it this way. There are about 1,200 right now licensed professional counselors in the state of West Virginia. I'm a licensed professional counselor in the state of West Virginia. We do not have a license for alcohol and drug counselors in the state of West Virginia. That's a certification process. I'm one of 196 advanced alcohol and drug counselors in the state of West Virginia. See how that number dropped really drastically? And so one of the statistics that we have, and I think Thomas speaks to your point as well, is when we think about what it takes to really effectively treat this level of polysubstance abuse, right? What we are doing is thinking about professionals that have this level of advanced training, right? Not somebody that's necessarily coming out of a brand-new program like mine, and maybe they've only done a practicum, an internship, and then we're launching them. And then we're launching them into what is a really, really complex population to work with.
Well, to follow up on what Abby said, I'm starting to kind of get a picture here. It's going to be online courses, so anyone from throughout the country can enroll.
They can, but they wouldn't be a student that would be applying for a city of Buchanan scholarship.
So we can, we can mandate that it's got to be somebody in Upsher County and Buchanan that could be a recipient of this.
Correct.
So we could have a better shot at keeping that talent local then.
That's the ask.
Now, the number that you had statewide, do you have a number for Upsher County? One. I know you said you were the alcohol, but, but of the, what was the number?
Twelve hundred.
Did we have 1,200 in the?
1,200.
Okay. You're the only one in Upsher County right now.
No, 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 not licensed professional counselors.
Okay.
Advanced alcohol and drug counselors.
How many licensed professional counselors do you know?
Randy, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
And then my final question, and I'll, I'll cede the floor, but.
Sure.
Is what is your anticipated enrollment in there? What is your goal? To obtain a number of enrollees in the first year? Do you have a goal yet?
We have about 12 that we're thinking of for fall.
Okay.
And probably another 12 in spring. We do two admissions points.
How many other counties are doing this?
Zero.
Zero. So we're like the pilot program in a sense?
Correct. There are two land-grant institutions in the state of West Virginia, Marshall University and West Virginia University. West Virginia Westland, be really proud of this, and let me talk up my colleagues here for a second. Be really proud of your community that West Virginia Westland is the very first college in the state of West Virginia to offer an addiction specialization.
Yeah. Are other, are other states considering this, you think?
Oh, absolutely. These types of programs already exist in, in credentials, in micro-credentials, even shortened, kind of abbreviated formats. Yes, lots of other states are already doing this.
Because Appalachia was hit really hard with this kind of whole scenario.
Absolutely.
So once they do this program, a travel program, will they be on the same title?
Same pathway. So what they can do, yes, and this is exactly why we, 12 is not just a random number I came up with. 12 equates to 180 contact hours of addiction-specific educational requirements that meets all of the certification requirements for the AADC, which is the Advanced Alcohol and Drug Counselor credential in the state of West Virginia.
So this could be a long-term endeavor for us. I mean, we're not going to go through these funds in one year.
I hope not.
Right.
No, we're going to, and the city will be receiving additional funds.
Right.
As will, as will the county as well. And I, and one of the things that we had suggested was, you know, making a similar, a similar outreach to the county commission to earmark some of their funds as well, because they, they got like four times as much money at least as, as we did in that settlement, or they will be. And, you know, if we were to do something jointly, it would really grow the impact substantially, yeah.
What's the greatest benefit from the standpoint of an individual that's counseling to have the certification? Would this provide them that is, from your perspective, really important?
Mr. Thomas, the youngest heroin addict I've treated at this point in my 20-year career was a 12-year-old boy in the juvenile services system. A beginning-level social worker or counselor or psychologist coming fresh out of a master's level program is not equipped to look a 12-year-old child in the eye and understand the level of trauma, poverty, socioeconomic, just absolute deluge of all of these factors that have come together to create the perfect storm for a kid like that. And so this type of certificate in advanced training and programming really helps providers to meet our clients where they are, not some ideal of where we think that they should be. Because we have to face the reality that in Appalachia, one of the hardest-hit areas, this is about intergenerational poverty, trauma, and use and abuse.
Do you have a bottom line that you'd like to receive from the city?
Well, if, if you're asking me, I would say all.
Eventually we're going to get around to talking numbers.
D, all of the above. And let me put it this way.
Sure.
I think that there are lots of counties, right, and cities that have received a much larger pool than the city of Buchanan has. And so some of the buckets, when you look at the initial MOU that the state put out, the 44-page document to help guide us in communities of how to spend this money, a lot of those buckets are really big-ticket items, right? If you're thinking about a residential treatment center, that's a very big ticket item. I think for a smaller city like the city of Buchanan to think about using this funding to establish a scholarship that can serve not only this community, people living and working in this community for several years beyond with that smaller pot of funding is a really good start. But I think you've got to be realistic about what can we do, because one thing that I've, I've seen some other communities do, quite frankly, is to start to chunk this money up into smaller pieces, and it's just not having the reach that they want it to.
I think we, we as a council have been waiting for an opportunity for something like this. We, we've had different individuals and, and groups come before us requesting this money, but nothing has really felt quite right. We, we've seen, we've, we've seen other individuals in the community not have the appropriate resources to combat this issue, and it hasn't worked out so well. This is an investment. We have, I think, a fantastic, the, the ideal partner here, an institution of higher learning that is four blocks that way, with all the resources that we could ever wish to have. There are communities that would film with a mouth to have what we have in Westland that won't have this opportunity because they don't have a Westland sitting down the street from their, from their, from their business hub. So I would encourage us to take the first steps to engage in a partnership with Westland. This doesn't, this doesn't tie any financial resources to it, but we can, we can talk more about this. We can, we can invite our friends from Westland back to talk nuts and bolts as to how to, how to properly set up this scholarship, if that's how we wish to, to do it. Tom can be involved to help us negotiate this and help, or negotiate is the wrong word, to help us facilitate this moving forward. But what I would like to see us do this evening, as it is on the agenda, is to, is to give Westland the affirmative this evening that we are a willing participant to engage in this program and to be a partner.
I, I think that's appropriate. Do you need a motion for that?
I do.
I, I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Thomas, a second by Mrs. Buckle. Is there any further discussion?
We'll have some additional meetings.
I, yes.
With the appropriate people.
I think, I, I'm assuming, Tom, you would stay involved.
Oh, yeah. As long as you want me to, that's my.
Right. And I think so that we don't get dragged down in waiting for two weeks for a meeting and two more weeks for a meeting, you could carry the ball, you know, in between those things.
Well, we want the scholarship available by this fall, their first class.
Well, we need to get, we, we make sure we dot our i's across the t's. Yeah.
I want to ask one more question. If this is successful this year, what happens next year? I mean, do you come back and ask for more money or, and you go to everybody else again next year? Is that how it works?
Or we reach an agreement that would kind of be a multi-year agreement? You know what? I mean, I'm thinking, you know, as, as the wheels are kind of going in my view, I think maybe what the, what the city can do is dedicate a certain amount of money per student, per Upsher County resident enrolled in the program, and that, you know, we go through and, and the city kind of sets aside, you know, a maximum, a bottom line or a top line figure on how much it's going to commit out of the 113,000 on a, on a per student, per Upsher County student-based student basis. And then that may last, that may last two or three years or four. I mean, just depending on what the final, the way the numbers kind of work out. In the meantime, additional settlement funds will come in and replenish, and the city can decide whether it wants to continue this or, you know, look at other opportunities. And, you know, this is just a first, this is just a first, you know, opportunity that's come up. There may be other things that the city wants to do in the future, and I don't think this ties the city's hands in any way.
Being in the school system, one of the things we had to deal with many times unfortunately were children that were basically drug-addicted infants.
Correct.
Grew up to be adults. What would this program do for those particular children, or is there anything in particular in the future that could potentially help those kids?
I think the biggest thing that you can do to help those kids in, in this program that we're promoting right now is to talk about having professionals that understand their needs in our school systems. Because that's a primary concern when I'm lecturing or being asked to come to professional development days in counties, which I do quite a bit of. One of the first questions is, how do I work with this kid? I don't have the tools. I don't understand what I need to do in response to their specific set of needs. So this level of training really helps set up, say, if it's a school counselor from Upsher County, to know how do I then take that knowledge and give it to all of my teachers, to every teacher's aide, to every person in that facility that's going to work with this child.
Very cool.
So we have the concept this evening. We appreciate your information and the detail. We have additional meetings ahead to craft this the right way. We do have a motion and a second on the table. If there's no further discussion, I entertain a motion that we approve establishing the partnership with West Virginia Wesleyan.
Well, they did.
You got a motion.
Oh, we have a motion.
Right.
Say aye then. He, he doesn't have to, but if he wishes to. All right, say aye.
Aye.
Are you abstaining?
Thank you.
You're abstaining?
Okay, so we have.
Unanimously.
Yeah, we already motioned. We have the, we have the affirmative, except for Mr. Randall, who is abstaining because his sister provided the detail this evening, so in case that wasn't abundantly clear.
I'm excited. I think this will be true.
You're off the mic, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that is over. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to partnerships. Catherine, I spoke with her at the beginning of the meeting. They, they've had some meeting changes at the library, and she is not yet prepared to provide the improvement project information and update to us this evening. Jay also mentioned that earlier, so otherwise Jay would be here as well. So we will invite Catherine back to another meeting, and I asked her if she wanted to have a report, and she said, if it's okay, I'll just, I'll just do what I normally do and just listen. So we're happy, happy you're here as always to represent the library, and we'll look forward to seeing that report at a, at a future meeting. That concludes the recognized guests. We move to public comment. And Lynn, you are up. Thank you for being patient with us and.
No problem.
And going through the agenda with us.
I learned something. Hi, my name is Lynn LeBlanc McNeil, and I'm new to town. I've owned land here for 25 years, but I just moved permanently a little less than a year ago.
Welcome to Upsher County.
Why, thank you. Which, right there, you started with my first problem. What is the difference between Buchanan and Upsher County? It seems like you're using the words, you know.
Right there. So that is the, we, we are the council of the city of Buchanan, which is a 2.85 square mile incorporated area that is, that has about 300 streets and 6,000 people. I noticed your address. You do not live within the city limits of Buchanan.
Right, but I pay you my taxes.
Well, you pay Upsher County taxes. You don't pay city of Buchanan. When you shop in Buchanan, you pay a 1% sales tax.
Okay.
But we do, we, you do not pay a, you do not pay a property tax.
To you.
No. You may have some utilities through us, because water and, and garbage pickup and stuff goes outside of city limits, but you do not pay taxes to us.
Okay.
You pay your taxes to the sheriff of Upsher County.
Okay, so you are just as little.
We are the, we are the county seat of, of Upsher County.
Okay. So when I address this problem, I'm talking to Upsher County, not Buchanan.
Depends on what the problem is.
The problem is funding for the senior center. I went to a meeting for the senior center last week, and the director sat there and started talking about where money comes from for the senior center. No money comes from here. And I'm like, wait a minute. I pay my taxes. How come none of this is going to the senior center? Now, I'm not going to stand here and say hundreds of thousands of dollars, but there's no reason why an area this big couldn't say, put a $5 tax on everybody in the county to go to the senior center. I mean, if you look at the people in this town, what's the age?
Well, so, actually, there is. You, in order for something like that to be done, the voters of the county would have to approve what's called a levy or a bond, and that would have to, that would be on the county's voting. So the county runs the elections in, in our, in, in West, in our, in Upsher County. The city follows the county's schedule. When you go to vote, it's, it's, the county runs the election. So the county commission would have to vote to place on the ballot an opportunity for citizens to vote for a levy for something like that. The citizens would then have to approve it. If they approve it, then it would go on a tax bill of sorts that citizens would pay when they pay their property taxes to the county. If they don't approve it, it, it's.
Okay, so how do you do that? How do you get the county to put this on the ballot?
So the county has what's called a county commission. There are three of them. They, three, yes, it's by state code. They operate at the Upsher County Courthouse, 40 West Main Street. You enter it, you, you enter it inside the annex building there on, on West Main.
Okay.
You, they meet every single Thursday morning at 9:00 a.m. You can call the county commissioner's office, which is located at 91 West Main Street. Yeah, so 91 West Main Street, it's their administrative annex. It's a brick building down across from CVS, kind of.
Okay.
Catty corner. You would call them, you would speak to the county administrative office and request to be placed on the agenda to, to address them. And then, so again, they meet every Thursday at 9:00 a.m. They publish their agenda usually on Tuesday mornings, of which we receive a copy of it because we're reciprocal government entities. And so then for Thursday, that agenda is set as of Tuesday. So you would need to call them tomorrow or Monday to get on the agenda for the next meeting, which is next week.
Next Monday.
And they will place you on the agenda at a certain time, Tuesday. That. Our. Agenda. Next. Certain. Well, they, we do. We don't establish time on here. They'll say, your appointment with them is at 9:05. Your appointment with them is at 10:05 or 10:35 or whatever. They, they structure their agenda for, for time slots. So you would be assigned a time slot to speak with them about. Your appointment with them is at 10:05 or 10:35 or whatever. They structure their agenda for time slots. So you would be assigned a time slot to speak with them about, about the issue at hand. And then they would decide if they want to take action on it or not. It's up to, the county commission would have the authority to place something on the ballot. Being that it's the Uptown County Senior Center, it's more appropriate for the entire county to have a say-so on it than just the City of Buckhannon. The only people that can vote for a municipal election live in that color-coded map right there.
What's my responsibility to Buckhannon then?
Well, I mean, you don't really.
I don't have it.
You would shop here. You would, you know, attend an event here. You would.
What about taxes on my vehicles or?
That's, that's not, that's not city.
That's not city.
That's state.
That's still, okay.
I don't think you owe us any money.
I can't believe it.
I will, I will tell you this. The county and the city are different in that we have different responsibilities. In the state of West Virginia, there is no such thing as a county maintenance road. You have either municipal streets, which the city takes care of, or you have state roads and that's it. West Virginia has the fourth largest state road network in the country because there are no, there are no county maintenance roads. So even, even the road you live on is a state road. Within the corporate limits, those streets are city streets. City crews maintenance those streets. The county commission does not have a road maintenance obligation at all.
So what you're saying nicely is nobody plows my road?
If it doesn't get plowed, it's the state, it's the state, it would be the state's responsibility to do it. My point is, is one of your questions was, is why don't we provide funding? We provide funding for a lot of things that the county doesn't provide funding for. Like, we, we have a street and parks department. That, we are working on a project right now over here on South Canal Street.
I saw that.
We are, we have a water department. We have a sewer department. We have a waste department.
County doesn't have any of those things?
No, they do not. So they are not in the utility business. The city is in the utility business. So we have an enterprise board for each individual utility. The water department has its own board. The waste department has its own board. The sanitary department has its own board.
So what is the county doing for me?
Well.
We should talk about metro.
The county, the county commission's responsibility is to, when the tax money comes in, okay? When you pay your taxes either once a year or twice a year, depending on how you set it up. When you pay your property taxes, the county commission's responsibility is to deviate that money in the places it's supposed to go. School system is a big part of it. The senior center is part of it. The health department is part of it.
No money, no money for the senior center from the county either. That was not part of the deal.
You're on that board.
I'm on the board. I'm the gentleman that invited you to this meeting. I've just been waiting for the opportunity to say, I'm glad you came. I knew you would. And the county commission, at this time, they do not provide any funding to the senior center.
I wasn't aware of that.
However, now, it's supposed to be on their financial budget next year, according to Mr. Bush. However, as I shared in our meeting that we had, the director of the senior center, there's two things I want to point out. The director of the senior center, what was it, Ambie? Two years ago, three years ago, came asking for funding. We needed some documentation. They never came back. That's not on us. Secondly, we provide, I think, a substantial amount of funding to, what is it, Country Roads Transit?
$15,000 a year.
And they bring a lot of seniors to the senior center and take them home. So we are helping in a sense by funding country roads. Just not the seniors, but veterans as well and other members of the community. So in a sense, the city is doing its part.
Well, like you said, okay. That $15,000 is for multiple people. That's not just money's giving to the senior center. One of the things they talked about at that meeting is they need all this money for the kitchen, right?
Well.
We're, you know.
The senior center does have funding for the addition that we want to do in renovations. But the city will not be, can't be, I don't think. That's another discussion for another day. But the city doesn't have a part in that. You need to come to.
Does the county have a part in that?
They should.
Only if they want to. I cannot speak for the county. But if you want, you can come to our next board meeting at the senior center and pose those questions.
I would make another suggestion, Jack, also. Is before you go publicly to the county commission, talk to the individuals that are commissioners before you do that. Get an idea of where they are on this. Because they may be totally for it or totally against it.
Well, here's another question. Even if they're totally against it, how do you get it on the ballot anyway? I should have the right to put something on the ballot?
Well, but there is a process. And that process is going through the county commission. I mean, that's just that, we are bound by West Virginia state code. In other states, some municipalities and counties have a lot more autonomy than we do in West Virginia. West Virginia is a, is a state-centric state. West Virginia cities and counties can operate within the guidelines that the West Virginia State Legislature has put into state code.
And they don't have something in that code that says I could get a petition and get something put on the ballot?
Well, I mean, yes. I mean, but it would be up to the county commission to determine, to set those parameters as to what the petition, what the guidelines are of the petition, you know, to authenticate signatures, what percentage of the voter, of the voter that are registered.
The only problem I have with what you're saying is if they originally say, no, they're not going to do this. And then I say, well, I want to get it on the ballot anyway. I'm kind of stuck on it because they've already said no. That doesn't work.
Well, that would be, that would have to be a Charleston change. That, that process would have to be a Charleston change from the state legislature. Because again, that's, that's the parent. We, so we just went through a 60-day legislative session. Things changed for us. So every, every session, things can change. Like, a couple sessions ago, we were, we are, we are no longer allowed to collect a certain revenue stream on a business license that we were before. The state legislature took it away. That is their prerogative. We, West Virginia is, is set up that the state, the state legislature wheels a lot of authority. So they, what we are able to, how we're able to operate is given under West Virginia state code specifically to municipalities.
I would suggest perhaps, and just for the essence of time, I would say if you meet with the state delegate, you can, you know, fill out a form of a delegate, a state senator. Do a little research. You know, we can give you the names of the three county commissioners. But you can hop on a computer and just Google search Uptown County. Get the commissioners, get their contact information. Ask for, as was suggested, individual meetings. You know, start researching like that. Because we could, I mean, we can honestly sit here all evening and talk about the nuances of state government, county government, city government, so on and so forth. But there's nothing that this body can do, you know, to help you get this petition on the county ballot, you know, is what I'm getting to. So, you know, I would suggest just starting doing that research and start reaching out to some of the state and county officials.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I'll make it.
I appreciate that.
Lynn, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
I'd like you to listen to me all that time. Where I come from, counties don't mean anything.
Where do you come from?
The county only is important when you have to go to court. The rest of the time, everything is done in a town. And the town goes for the whole, you know, how many miles? That says it's Milford, Oxbridge.
You see that map back there?
Yep.
That was about, yeah, the one that's a little crooked. That is Uptown County. All right? There is, there is a cluster up there. There's a, there's a cluster up there in the north central part of the county that you can see that looks a little bit more gray than everything else. That's where we are. That's what, that stat right there.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a bunch, guys.
Thank you.
Barb, you're in charge of that. You're closer.
Ambie, can you put a level on the budget?
I don't.
I believe that we, I don't believe anybody else is here to address public, or publicly to address the city council. So, Ambie, if, if we haven't talked about finances enough, your financial report is up next.
I have to make a comment about that report. I know it was very dry and boring. That was music to my ears. If that were an exciting report, I'd be sweating bullets back.
We like, we like a boring honor report. You're right.
I love a boring honor report. You can ask me anything. I'll tell you about as exciting as heated. Okay, so you're, were you asking me to come up for a report? Or am I just trying to get this moving along?
Well, whatever, whatever you'd like to do.
Everything looks good, Ambie.
Sorry. Okay, your balances for your enterprise funds, March 2025, waste collection, $1,827,000. Now, you have a CD savings at $322,000. You have your letter of credit, $64,000. The water board money market and checking, $1,089,000. And your working capitals and savings are at $912,000. The sanitary board money market and checking are at $952,000. Working capital CDs are at $476,000. Stormwater fund is at $220,000. So that was your enterprise funds. The financial audit for the FEMA generator grant was conducted yesterday. That's when someone individually from FEMA comes in and does its own audit of that one grant. Actually, it was FEMA generator one and two. But it all went well. I've asked if they're going to do a report, can we also have that? The only other thing I have to report in your bills to be approved. The TESTA Associates, there's a survey for property swap at Wesleyan. We've been charged so far $2,628. WVU Fire Extension Service, annual driver operator aerial class was at $2,600. Valley Steel, we expended $2,200 for materials for building a flatbed for one of our trucks. $2,100 to RDR Energy, 10 yards of concrete for the South Canal sidewalk. $2,500 Hardman Trucking for a motor for one of our large trucks at Kenworth. And then $1,077 to Uptown County Board of Education for the use of the basketball, for basketball at the high school gym. And that was for a period from January, mid-January to the end of March. That was for custodians that had to be there and run all the.
$1,000 and some dollars?
A lot of activities are going on up at the Colonial Arts Center. Local Music Night has picked up some interest. We had that first show in March that had about 46 people in the building. The second one was April the 5th. We had a band there and an AMB band and Dominic English were performing, 122 in attendance that night. The Mechanic Community Theater has been using it weekly in March and April for the upcoming performance of Alice in Wonderland. That's going to be on May the 9th through the 11th. Wesleyan, Wesleyan, West Virginia Wesleyan held a jazz fest on April the 12th. BU High School's up there tonight for a jazz band performance. And then the middle school's going to be there, their theater club. They'll be in the building 20 through, through the 26th, but their performance is 25th through the 26th. That's all I have.
Any questions for Ambie relative to her financial report? Hearing none, but I would entertain a motion that we approve the bills that were outlined in that statement. We have a motion by Randy. Is there a second? Second by Pam, I heard first. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Like a sign opposed. That motion carries unanimously.
I abstained.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, Jack, you didn't.
On bills?
No, you're on, you're down on, you're down on the.
You can vote on bills.
Good catch, Mr. Sanders. I was just saying if you were paying attention.
Oh, wait.
All right, up next is our Public Works Director, Mr. Ethan Houston. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Ethan!
Try to keep it short and sweet. We have been getting ready to wrap up the South Canal Street sidewalk. As you've seen, we milled it today. I've seen the papers sitting in the PFC lot to pave it tomorrow. It'll be good as new after that. We also are getting ready to wrap up the Jolton Park stage. For Strawberry Festival, we have some railing to get around it. It's supposed to be here early next week and hopefully get installed by the end of the week. And we've been doing some pothole patching as weather permits. Looks like next week we'll get quite a bit more done. And other than that, we're getting ready to move back Island Avenue to wrap up the sidewalks there. The waste department has been having a few issues this month for once. It seems like we've been evaluating some options to cover the CD dock to expand operations there and cover it. Sewer department, we have been working on some swarm water issues in South Buckhannon, Long Taylor Street. Also been continuing to make some pretty good progress along the CMH development in Vicksburg. And we're continuing to work with TESTA for the plant evaluation and options to upgrade that plant. The water department is, has been advertised as been working on hydrant flushing and continue, getting ready to start swapping some services on Mead Street for the water project that they just did last year. And continuing with the water plant project and some of the funding options. For the engineering, the Tenerton booster station, the punch list for the paving issues need to be addressed. And for the Hazard Integration Grant Number One, the contractor is scheduled to be on site next week. And all project-related activities are expected to be complete by the end of the month. Grant Number One, the materials for the handrails and additional platform are scheduled to be delivered this week or next week, I believe now. And again, that is supposed to be wrapping up around the end of this month. The DOT tap grant, we are working to reroute some of the scope of that project towards the Lowe's area instead of Morton Avenue. There's a meeting on Monday to discuss some of those options with the DOH, she was administering that grant. And zoning and code enforcement, there's a housing enforcement board on Monday at 5:30. Plan Commission is meeting in Monday also at 7:00 after that meeting to discuss the rezoning of the lots on South Canal Street from R1 to R, or C2. And on the back page of this report, there's a checklist for the spring cleanup that zoning looks for this time of year.
We'll post that on social media. For the benefit of folks that are watching or will watch this over the next few weeks, could you just hit a few highlights of what the, with paving? We're going to have contractors paving some of the main bigger projects. And then the city itself will be paving some of the smaller projects, right?
Yeah, so you remember, I believe it was in one of the February meetings, we approved a list of projects. Some of those were done through the contract that JFK Allen was awarded at the beginning of, or at the, yes, beginning of the 2025 fiscal year. They're getting ready to do South Canal. That's one of theirs. They will be paving Reggie Street from Camden to College Avenue and the upper lower rustic drive areas. And the city street department, we have our paving paver in operation. We'll be doing Rigger Avenue, moving to East Lincoln. And then if we have funds left over still, we have a couple others, I believe. Railroad Avenue down around the college and Maple Street, I believe is another one.
Yeah, not, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, just so when people see the different crews working, I just want them to understand that we have some, some that are being contracted out through JFK Allen, some that we'll be doing ourselves.
In regard to the potholes we have, you have an idea as to when they'll be completed or get filled?
I'm hoping by.
A timeline?
I'm hoping around the end of May, usually. That gives us a pretty good, we try and get a lot of them done by Strawberry Festival time. This winter, there was a few more that popped up just due to the severity of it. So we might be a little bit behind. But I think a lot of the major ones that are causing issues are, will be wrapped up by at least the festival time.
Any update for City Park?
City Park, we got the catch delivered for the small retaining wall on the corner of the basketball court. Trying to install that maybe tomorrow. Depend on how much assistance the paving needs as far as traffic. far as traffic. Other than that, we're just trying to get, we're going to reseat and launch it now that the weather's starting to pick up. And other than that, it's just waiting for grass to grow. Everything's at, we're just trying.
Do you know there's a huge tree down at Frey Brooks Park?
Yeah, we're going to wait until it dries up a little bit. We got to get our big equipment in there and try not to tear it up. It's.
You think it'll be done before Strawberry Festival?
I figure so. We usually try and get a lot of the cleaning up stuff done prior to that.
I haven't been down to look at it, but are you having concrete steps at that stage? Are you doing a portable thing there?
No, it'll be actually a metal stage that Brad Cutright fabricated it. It looks really nice, yeah.
Steps, yeah.
Yeah, there will be steps.
Are they just going to be moved in and out each time that used?
No, the steps will be permanent, yeah.
Okay.
We just haven't put them up yet because we don't have the railing and we don't want people up there without the railing, so it'll go up at the same time.
You said Brad fabricated that?
Yeah, yeah. He did a good job on, look at, pay extra attention to him whenever you go see him, they get up.
What was that?
Brad fabricated that itself.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. There's a lot of talent there, yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Ethan? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
From the code enforcement and zoning, I entertain a motion that we approve the building and wiring permits issued to businesses and citizens in your report. A motion by Randy, is there a second? Second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries noting Mr. Rigor's abstention.
Exactly.
I got it right that time.
All right. Up next, City Police Chief Matt Gregory. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I'm at.
Just a few updates tonight. One of our newest officers, Chris Spotlow, is set to graduate from the State Police Academy in two weeks, on May 2nd. Upon his graduation, he'll return back to the city and begin his field training with our field training officers. Ahead of the academy, he did what was what we call Phase One of his training, which consisted of four weeks of field training, just to kind of get ahead of the schedule. Our total field training period is 12 weeks, so when Officer Spotlow returns, he will have eight of those 12 weeks to continue in Phases Two and Three before he is released to work on his own. Work continues on the plan for the West Virginia Strawberry Festival. We have more meetings just ahead of us as we put our security plans in place for this event. And then finally, just a real quick, I'll have more on this as we move forward, but the Kalia on-site assessment went very well. We spent three days with the assessor here at the beginning of April, who took a comprehensive look at our department and our various operations, conducted numerous interviews over the course of those three days. And so we currently await the final report from him. We anticipate that to come here in the, in the days ahead. And as soon as that is made available to me, I'll make sure that it's shared with councils. And Mayor, that's all I have in my regular report.
Any questions for Chief Gregory?
Just a comment. I was talking with the chief today, and patrols have started with the, with all of our various officers, particularly through the day. At ex points during nighttime, they do a lot of business checks, so they're in and out of the cars. During the nighttime, on the sidewalks, you know, doing some random business check stuff just to make sure doors are secure and stuff. So thank you, thank you for that. That's one of the things I know that all the councils and agencies to see happen. We appreciate that.
Thank you. All right. There are three line items under Chief Gregory's line item here. So first is an item to talk about directing the city attorney to review on-street parking regulations in residential area.
So in our efforts to address issues as it relates to parking, particularly parked items on the street that do not constitute motor vehicles, so things like trailers, other such things, there have been some questions that have arisen from those that we have encountered with, with these issues concerning the language of some of the ordinances, particularly some perceived gray areas in the ordinances themselves. I have discussed this with the city attorney. It may be, and we bring it up tonight, it may be prudent for the mayor and council to perhaps direct a committee or direct the city attorney to do a legal review of some of these questions that have come up with some of these ordinances, just so that there is clarification from an enforcement standpoint.
Tom just raised his hand, too, so.
Yeah, thank the chief for bringing this up. And I just mentioned, so the incident in particular he's referring to arose from some resident complaints about a resident who was parking a box trailer on the street, on East Main Street for an extended period of time, or at least what was perceived to be. There was some engagement with that resident, and I think, you know, a review of the ordinance reveals some ambiguity, I think, in the ordinance as it stands right now. I think if the city were to want to strictly ban keeping box trailers on streets for beyond a certain reasonable period of time, then they should probably revisit the ordinance and the ordinance numbers escaping me at the moment, but it has to do with on-street parking. Where, you know, you obviously can't leave inoperative motor vehicles on a street, but where does that leave things like box trailers? So if it is that, what I can do is for the next meeting, prepare an amendment for that ordinance, and the council can decide at that point whether it would, and it'll be a two reading ordinance, the council can decide whether or not it would want to bring this kind of clarity to, you know, to the code, and then we can deal with this situation. But I just felt like, given the, given the language as it exists right now, and the, kind of the dug-in position of, you know, the people involved, that before we try any kind of enforcement action, we should really be clear that the ordinance is as clear as it can be.
Good. Good.
I think it's, I think it's arguable that to do what, what Chief Gregory wants to do, but I think we just need to, I think we need to clean it up.
Need a motion?
Well, yes, to direct the city attorney to review the on-street parking regulation in the residential area specific to the ordinance that is, that is covering that, that topic. So yes, I entertain that motion.
I want to mention something.
Hold on one second. We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Now there's discussion.
Okay, I don't know if anybody noticed it, but I did. I brought to attention that somebody here down on East Main a couple of weeks ago, there was a car that was broken down, and they literally put up a pop-up tent, covered the whole thing.
That's what we're talking about.
So, okay. I want to make sure. Well, when you said box trailer, that's.
It's the same, it's the same area.
It's different, it's, okay, we were, yeah, the complaints were originally about the box trailer.
Right, right.
Then it became, well, that was, I think that's pretty clearly out of bounds, some of the ordinance doesn't exist right now. I don't think you can do that.
With the, with the tent?
The tent, oh, right, broken down car, yeah. You can't do that. And that's, that's clear. That can be abated now.
Yeah, and it was.
Oh, okay. Good. All right. Thank you.
So it's been taken care of.
But it's the same area of concern geographically. Any other questions? Hearing the need for none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. That motion carries. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Matt. All right. Up next, Governor's Highway Safety Program. Yes, sir. We're still under Matt's report. We haven't got past that yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If council chooses tonight, passage of this would authorize me to be a signatory to an agreement with the Governor's Highway Safety Program. This is a program that we have long been in partnership with for a number of years. We kind of got away from that in the last few years, but this would be a return to that partnership. This partnership is twofold, the first of which provides grant monies to the city of Buchanan to fund overtime patrols for our officers to work above and beyond the regular duty shifts, to focus on various highway safety issues, including but not limited to things like DUI enforcement, speeding enforcement, stop, stop signs, stoplights. So that would be the first partnership with this. The second of which, partnership with the Governor's Highway Safety Program has provided us equipment in the past, including things such as laptop computers for our cars, radar guns, and other traffic safety equipment. So again, this has been a mutually beneficial partnership that we have enjoyed for a number of years with the Highway Safety Program. So we're bringing this back to the mayor and council tonight to seek authorization to reenter this partnership.
I know the answer to this, but why do we get away from it?
Oh, come on. You're, you, you, don't answer that. All right. We all, we all know. All right, so.
Not necessarily.
I withdraw that question.
As the judge.
I do have a real question, and that is, I just read through that, and it's with the county, the city of Clarksburg?
Yes, the city of Clarksburg is the sub-grantee.
Okay.
From, for the state, well, for this region. The state of West Virginia is broken up into a number of regions. They receive its federal funding from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to focus on highway safety projects, particularly enforcement of highway safety regulations. And so the city of Clarksburg, for our region of North Central West Virginia, is a sub-grantee. So they are the fiduciary that all funding passes through for all the other entities.
Yeah, because on Reddit, I scratched my head a bit on that. I assumed that's what it was, but I don't want to just assume.
Yeah, so when, so when we, when we file our financial reports regarding the grant activities, we file with the city of Clarksburg here in turn, acting as the fiduciary, would fund that money to the city of Buchanan.
They've just established regional hubs around, and that just happens to be ours.
Of course.
Kind of like it is with restaurants and shopping, the same with police.
So any other questions?
You can ask, you can ask whatever you want.
I'm smiling.
I enjoyed that.
I bet you did. I know you did. All right, well, it'll be good to get back in this program. Appreciate you bringing this to us. Is there, is there a motion to approve the agreement or the request to reinstate the Governor's Highway Safety Program in Buchanan?
Seven.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Now, let's see here. We, our, our last item for Chief Gregory is just to follow up with the agreement with Central Towing and Salvage and the, as our third-party towing and storage service for our events.
Yeah. Just real quick on that, I think Tom had some comments on that. In advance, I know this was accepted and adopted by council in the last council meeting. In advance of that, just for clarification, once the bid document was opened by myself and AMB and Barb witnessed as well, we were in contact with the bidding company, just to clarify that they were capable of upholding the expectations of this agreement. And that is to make sure that they were able to stage for at least an hour for each of the enumerated events throughout the year, and that they would be responsible for billing of any vehicles that they towed, and that there would be no financial liability on the city's part between us and the towing company. We have also, as we addressed this and began to formulate this plan for documentation purposes, I was also in conversation with Doyle Cutright, the director of the 911 Center, to, even though this is an agreement between the city of Buchanan and a private business, we would still request that if any towing occurs at the event itself, that we still utilize the comm center to document any vehicles that are towed, just so that there's a paper trail. And that would, from our policy standpoint with the city, we have to document all vehicles that are towed. This would keep it consistent, because right now, the comm center is the central organization that does that, and so this would continue in that vein. So just for clarification.
Thanks, Matt. Mr.?
Thanks, chief. The, the letter agreement is not in your packet, but it's, it just provides that, it provides for all of the terms that are in the RFP. It's a one-year term. There are no financial costs to the city. And they also clarify that they will carry insurance, that they will name the city as an additional insured, and that they will not charge any rates or engage any practices that are approved by the Public Service Commission of West Virginia, which is their regulating entity. Take any questions if you have any.
So it's good to go.
It's good to go.
Any action from us tonight?
No, this is just a follow-up and more information.
I'm happy we got that worked out. I'll sign it on behalf of the city, no objections, but we're, we're all set.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anything else you?
I don't.
Okay, thanks. All right. We are down to council comments and announcements. We'll begin with Mr. Randall.
Big thanks to Rotary and Mr. Everett. Wanted to take a moment to talk about not only an investment with the Wesleyan College and the addiction counseling, but the best, efficient use is an understatement on that for this opioid fund. In an ever-changing landscape, to get existing professionals out there working now, up to, ahead of this thing, is only necessary. I'm all for that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with everything he says. And I also want to thank you for coming in, and I love to see people come from other areas and even give us some ideas and things that we can improve on. So you come back all the time. Okay? Okay. And I just want to hope that everybody has a nice Easter weekend, safe families, and just have a good time and be kind to everybody.
Thank you. Jack?
I think AMB deserves a round of applause for his good output. And Barb, I'm sorry, Barb. Well done, well done. I still don't get the water thing, but I'll. Anyways, I agree with everything that's been shared so far. I wanted to mention Officer Hissam. His father passed away Monday night. You know, I'm not always aware of all the city employees that lose family or parents or whatever, but, you know, Adrian, his mother, was one of our secretaries. So just want to, it comes to mind, please say a prayer for the Hissam family. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Thomas?
The, also, there was a passing of Steve Holmes in the last week, and he was a good person for the community. And we didn't know that until the Water Board passed away Tuesday evening. I tend to read a lot on audio books, about 10 hours a day. I enjoy it. It's kept me sane to some degree, I hope. But I have been listening to the news lately a lot, and I have Sirius XM radio, but I get Fox and CNN and MSNBC and all the other networks, and it's very interesting. People sometimes just watch one particular news outlet and don't do anything other than that. But I would suggest that it might be helpful for people to listen to different news outlets. Maybe you'll feel like you live in different countries at some time. And I'm very concerned about our country today. It's a very divided country, but listen to the news. And, but just don't listen to one station. Listen to, it's very diverse, and make up your own mind about where we're at as a society. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Thomas. Rob?
Just wanted to wish everyone a happy Easter and hope everyone has a good time and stays safe at the multiple Easter egg hunts that we have coming up. It's a lot of fun. It's good to hear in spring, a lot of lawnmowers in the city doing the first mowing and first trimming and fertilizing and that, keeping all the yards clean.
Your yard's nice and small, so.
It is. One thousand acre.
Two, two swipes and it's done, so-
Three.
You gotta go to the backyard for two, you know.
I do, I get on my riding mower.
Yeah, now since Vince has made you cut your shrubs, you got maybe another swipe.
I'll be next week.
That's right. Thanks, sir. City Recorders report?
Well, thank you, sir. We have a report of events, correspondence and information. The mayor's statement on recent local lines flooding was put out on social media and given to our local media. I want to remind everybody of a planning commission meeting on the 21st at 7:00 PM, where their proposal to rezone a section of South Canal Street from Putnam to Leonard will be taken up. Letter from Congressman Riley M. Moore, reason was the community project funding, they called that a CPF, so that's part of our packet tonight, and that's available here at City Hall. March 25th, report of cat-dog activity from the Upshur County Commission is in our packet. The city is assisting with West Virginia Wesleyan College graduation ceremonies, certain street closures will take place on May 10, 2025. Cancellation of the city council meeting on May 15, 2025, to avoid overlap at the West Virginia Strawberry Festival, we want to make everyone aware of that. Water Department announcement, they are in the process of hydrant flushing. It began on the 14th, it'll continue until all hydrants are properly flushed, and they're doing pressure testing too, as they're going through there. Want to remind everybody, the Free Residential Paper Shredding Event, April 26th, at the Public Works Facility at 395 Mudlick Road, the hours on that is 9:00 AM till 12:00 noon. The transfer station will be closed this Saturday in observance of Easter Saturday. Out of Brushy Fork Event Center, we have Saturday night, April 19th, the Upshur County Shrine Club Elimination Dinner, 400 attendees are scheduled for that event. And then the following Saturday night, April 26th, we'll welcome the students from Buchanan High School for the high school prom. We're working on some weddings and other events coming up in May and June. I did hear today from the construction company, it looks like we'll be wrapping up construction out there at the end of September, early October, which brings up the paving schedule. There'll be no activities at the event center from about mid-August through September, because they're going to be redoing all of the parking out front, including paving all the way out to the main highway. So even the guard duties will be restricted at that point, as they go in and, and prepare, you know, the, the parking lot areas for that work, and they're putting another parking lot around back off to the side, so that takes the, when drill is happening, that keeps our front parking lots open for activity there.
What time on that again?
Mid-August to, through September is when the paving will take place. That's one of the last things for that project out there, it's just a bit of major project, and they've done a very good job on it. And I just want to mention, I want to thank Tom O'Neill for, for bringing in the WEWC program, as Scott Randall mentioned, great presentation, I think it's a great partnership. Kudos for South Canal Street getting paved, staged, job done, looks magnificent. Hope all council members have had a chance to go look at it. Our crew did a fantastic job there. And Rigor Avenue, I had, I had that brought up to me several times at our event last weekend at the event center, and I said, "It's coming, it's coming," so kudos to the, to the departments for all their good work. So that's, that's what the recorder has, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Last evening, I want to thank Council Lady Bucklue. Randy, myself and Jack attended the Downtown Decor Decorating Committee meeting, got some good ideas moving forward to bring to council hopefully soon with some prices. I know Pam's already started to reach out from the meeting from last night, and we've got ideas that will take us through, that will improve the entire downtown experience, specifically, we've spent a lot of time talking about Christmas, but we also branched off into, into some fall decorations as well, and some, and some potential events. So thank you, Pam, for, for that committee, and we'll look forward to recommendations coming soon to council. I do want to thank you for coming this evening. We are, we're, we welcome you to our community. We know it can be confusing to an out-of-stater, or to really anyone, we have people that have lived here their whole lives and don't realize what, what, how, how things work. The amount of phone calls I get that, that are county issues, that the city can't do anything about, from people who have lived here forever, so, you know, it's, it's good to have the dialogue and be able to explain some of the things, so I'm sure that there are some people that are watching tonight that learned from the dialogue this evening. So, but we invite you to come back anytime, and we do encourage you to go to the county commission meeting, because that will just kind of give you the, another perspective of the government body here in the, in the community. I do appreciate all the work city crews have done, we are, you know, we're, we're getting to our busy, busy time, and we're trying to improve the community with every step we take. So do want to give a quick update, the, we believe that we've got some solutions that we can deploy, hopefully to take action on one of those at our next sanitary board meeting. We had a lengthy discussion this morning specific to the, the backyard flooding on, on the east side of Camden Avenue, all the way down to Pass Randolph and Wood Street, that would take the, the excess water to the river. So I appreciate Ethan and Cody working on, and Jay, of course, can't forget Jay, working on a plan to help us with that, that, that area to alleviate the, the problem that's there. If you look at the topographical map, the, the point at which is the, is the problem is the same elevation or maybe even a half a foot lower than the river, and that's, but then it goes back up again before it gets to Randolph Street. So it, it is, it is a troublesome area of, of town, but we are, we're gonna, we're gonna work, we're gonna do the best we can to, to try to devise a solution that will work for everyone. So thank you, thank you for that. I know we interrupted some vacations, well, two weeks ago when we needed to get that, that taken care of, but that's what our city employees do, that's why they take the positions, they understand that it's not nine to five, it's, it's, could be sometimes 24/7, so. With that, appreciate everyone on council, we had a good meeting, I'm looking forward to the Wesleyan partnership. I do believe that we have a great, great asset here with Wesleyan in many ways, but especially with this, with this issue of helping to heal the community. So thank you, council, for, for taking that first step tonight. At 8:51, I entertain a motion that we adjourn, and have a happy Easter. Thank you.